So I'm here. Hey, can I take the vote again?
Yes.
So we just gotta all stand up. I'll go around and kicking.
You know, kinda.
I could be in there twice.
Double good.
And I'll be double good, maybe double bad.
We got nine AM.
Let's call this meeting. Stand and say the pledge.
Actually, why you don't want his chair?
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
So here.
There.
Charles Willsey.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
All right, now we'll all stand.
We'll swear again.
Yeah, well, we'll swear again.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of this state? And that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of County Commissioner in and for the County of Omaha according to the rest of your abilities?
I do.
I need that sign. That sign or design.
Good.
Okay, so the board chairperson must be elected each odd numbered year for a two-year term unless the board provides a resolution or a board rule that the chair should be elected annually.
Yep, they're on.
Go ahead.
Yep. So I need a motion if you would like to change to a one-year term for the chair. If not, we'll move on.
I'll make a motion and we change to one year.
Got a second? No second? So it guys. Okay. All right, we will keep it as a two-year term then. I will now call for nominations for the chair.
I nominate Jenny David.
I second it.
Were you gonna say something?
Yeah.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? All right, we will do a roll call. Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yep.
Charlie Willsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Okay. Let's swap seats.
Board, welcome back.
Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, we've got item four, election of vice chairperson. Is there election of vice chairperson?
I like Brenda Simmons nominated or whatever you wanna call it.
Brenda Simmons? I'll support that. Is there any other?
I nominate Craig Scott.
Do we have a support for that?
May I support myself?
Yeah.
I'll support myself.
We have a nomination for Brenda Simmons and Craig Scott for vice chairperson. Is there any other nominations? We do a roll call for Brenda first. Roll call for Brenda Simmons. Um, Craig Scott.
Oh.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Yes.
I wouldn't call them. Charles Willsey. Roger Mahew.
Yep.
Jenny David.
Yes.
So that's three. So.
Yeah.
Just stated, we don't have to go through another roll call. There's no reason.
There's, that's a, that's a, uh, excuse me, that's a majority for vice chairperson. Item five, we have resolution to approve rules of procedure.
Fortunately, as I'm looking at my agenda, that was not added and it should be as item five. Rules of procedure for the benefit of the board set forward the standard operating procedure with the board itself. It's somewhat lengthy, several pages that you've seen on your iPads. The reason this comes up each, beginning of each term is that the board has an opportunity to really change these rules at any stage. And today it's important because you've got two decisions you're gonna make. You're gonna be doing nominations for your standing and liaison committees and you will be setting your schedule, your meeting schedule for the year. The rules already tell us how that process works. The appointment of the committees is pretty simple. Uh, there is a request from MSU Extension to appoint a commissioner to an extension advisory committee. If you are so willing, you'll wanna add that to the list of the liaisons and then appoint someone. More importantly though, these rules lay out a meeting schedule that in effect is on the Thursdays. Our first two meetings of the month are at nine o'clock, the second two are at 5:30. We do a committee of the whole followed by a regular meeting, uh, which is the more formal meeting. And then that's, that's the way it's laid out right now in the rules of procedure. If you as a board wanna change the meeting date, time, or whatever combination you wanna do, it would be proper to state that now so that we would then approve a resolution that would change the rules to reflect whatever date or time you wanna choose. Or you can just leave it as is and move forward. But as you can see, we can't really move forward setting those dates until we know for sure what you want to do. Now, this isn't your only opportunity to amend the rules of procedure. It is a pretty lengthy document and maybe we get to about June and you say, well, this section just isn't working for us. I'd like to change it. A motion is made and it can be changed. So this isn't something that's cast in stone for your full term. But for now, there are just certain things that we need to make sure are aligned before we proceed with the other items on today's agenda. Uh, as I said, they're pretty, pretty thorough, uh, several pages worth. Uh, but anything that's in this document, uh, you know, feel free if you'd like to, uh, have a conversation about changing it, this would be a perfect time to do that.
Do these times, dates work for everybody?
They do for me, for you.
Mr. Mahew.
I guess.
Mr. Willsey.
They work for me.
Mr. Scott.
Yes, they work for me.
So we will continue as is.
And it would be, um, proper at this point for the chair to call for a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the rules of procedure.
Can I have a motion?
To approve the adoption of procedure moving forward.
A move that we adopted rules of procedure.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott. Do we have a support?
I'll support.
More support from Commissioner Simmons? Is there any discussion on that or questions?
So I have never read this. I mean, I supported it because I'm, I'm assuming and that's not a good thing for me to do. Believe me. Sitting in this seat, it's not. So I don't know if there's something in there that I'm gonna disagree with or not.
Okay.
But he said that we can change it anytime. So I have a chance to read it this week. And if I have any things that I have some concerns about, then I can bring it up and then it can be changed, right? Is that correct?
Absolutely.
Okay. As long as there's not procedures in there and Brenda Simmons gotta leave every time there's a meeting on there, that's okay.
It's, it's, it's basically doing what we've been doing. There's, correct, okay.
I sent it that way.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote. Roger Mahew.
You have to vote. You have to vote, Roger.
Okay. What do we vote on? Why here it ain't working?
The rules of procedure.
It's what we've always run by.
Yep.
Alright, okay.
Charles Willsey.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Cranked up.
Um, item six, a appointment to standing committee. Committees each year after selection of the board chairperson, the chairperson shall, with the consent of the appointees, appoint commissioners to the standing committees of the board. Standing committee appointments are subject to confirmation by the Board of Commissioners. The board currently recognizes six standing committees, Claims and Accounts, Insurance, Law Enforcement, Negotiating, Ordnance Enforcement, and Personal, Personnel and Policy. These committees consist of two members each and meet as needed. Members, memberships on the Claims and Account Committee rotate, rotates each quarter. I, I would like a, uh, we can postpone this until next, correct? I would like everybody to have an opportunity, at least I would, I would like to take a further opportunity to review it. Um, Tim did provide us with, uh, dates, times. Um, I would like to make sure that, uh, these fit everyone's schedule. Um,
Chairman.
And everyone gets the opportunity to, uh, voice their likes.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Scott.
Uh, as I've been doing claims for the last quarter, I'll volunteer to do the claims next week.
Okay.
For the next meeting.
You and who?
Me. I wanna do it because I can't do it next quarter or the next quarter.
Okay, who, Commissioner Scott, who was doing it with you?
Uh, Brad Willis.
Okay.
And I took his place.
So, so at least for, for claims, we have, before the next meeting, we have Commissioners Matt and Commissioner Simmons. Is there any other ones that have to be decided on today?
Madam Chairman.
Besides, besides claims.
Uh, there are not, and I would wanna point out that the times that you see on here, the meeting times are subject to the committee's review. For instance, I'm looking at, um, uh, Claims and Accounts, uh, when necessary, and the second and fourth Tuesdays at nine AM. That's not really been our practice. Uh, it's been, as those meeting members can get in to look at the claims, so it hasn't been hard and fast. So I, I wouldn't want anybody to, uh, not volunteer for a committee because they don't like meeting time that's on there. And that's absolutely subject to the committee and your availability. And none of these committees outside of the Claims Committee meets on a regular basis. It's been in an as-needed basis, so you're not committing yourself to a specific day and time every month. Uh, it's generally as an issue comes up, we'll call a meeting, take care of the business.
So let's say this.
Commissioner Simmons, since I'm on this committee, do you have to be here at nine AM in the morning to do this?
No, in fact, the Claims Committee, uh, sometimes the two committee members would meet at the same time, but sometimes they would come in when it's convenient. And those are, you're sitting down with a box of bills and going through those.
I, I do it after work. Um, the girls leave it, leave it for me and with our badges, we can get in and out, so it's, it's more, uh, you will have. Um, the other, the other committees that we are serving, are, uh, boards that we're serving on, I would like to wait for that as well until, uh, next, next week.
Well, I have six of them too. I have to go there.
Correct, you're on the town, townships, and that's why I asked him to provide us with a list of, uh, each one of us commissioners as far as our townships, um, and, uh, everybody's schedule. So with looking at that, um, versus the other boards and committees, things have to be kinda equaled out. So, questions? What I, what I, I wanted everybody's opinion on, um, Commissioner Scott and myself have, have, uh, this is not our, our first term as far as changing, um, boards, um, doing different, like right now I'm on the EDC, I'm on Michigan Works, I would like to try some different, um, boards, and I think that that's extremely important, uh, for commissioners to get different insight, different information. Um, learning new things and bringing it back to all of us. Thoughts, opinions, Commissioner Scott?
Well, for most of my committees that like to remain, um, NEMSC was not very effective. I'd like to get off of that. I, uh, there's a couple I'm interested on being on, but, uh, I'm on Airport, it's been very good. I like to, I would like to remain. I'm on Personnel and Policy and Negotiating. Um, uh, what else? Parks and Rec, I cert, I have been serving as chair, chair, chairperson there. Uh, like to remain there. Um, so, I mean, I, there's a couple I wouldn't mind taking on, but, and dropping off the, the one.
What's your guys' thoughts, Commissioner Willsey?
I mean, I think it's good that we, we all get an opportunity to learn a number of different branches of the county and how things are run in these different committees. Uh, so I, I do, I do feel it's good that if we can switch, but then on the other side of that, you know, you're already involved, you make connections, you can have a little more, little more positive influence if you already know things real well. So I, you know, I kinda see both ways, but I do think it's important that we have some diversity and we get to learn many aspects of the county. Especially if we're making this a big commitment, long-term roles.
Commissioner Simmons?
Well, I look at these committees and I was a commissioner for six years and I, there's some committees here I've never been on that I would like to be on. And the reason I wanna be on them is because I, I don't know what it's all about. And I think for a commissioner to be a good commissioner, the more he knows about all these committees and what goes on in all these places, the more he's gonna understand when we start making motions about different stuff. When we start talking about stuff, he'll understand what's going on there also. Because all I know is those little committees that they gave me and, uh, then when they needed, then they put me on a committee because, nevermind, we'll go there. Um, yeah, so there are some committees here, um, like I see NEMSC, NEMSC was one of them. You know, I don't even know what NEMSC is all about. So I think it's great to switch committees. I don't know how often you wanna switch them. And I understand about being involved in there, but, um, it's, it's pretty easy to get caught up, especially if the one that's leaving can update the one that's moving into that spot. But what, what going on or go, or go to like the airport, go talk to Ben Evergreen, say, hey, what's, what's been going on here? You know, so bring me up to date so I know what's going on. So I think it's important because I think it's important, and we have a beautiful airport. And some people have never seen it. Board have never been out there. So I think it's, it's important that we, we switch committees.
I think two serve on the airport, correct? Yeah, cause you and Commissioner Rebecca did as well.
And, and Brett.
Oh, okay.
There's three, three Tony, three city.
Yep.
And a citizen of the large.
Commissioner Mahew, do you have any questions?
I did.
If you have any questions, if there's a list of the committees, if you have any questions, please reach out to Tim or, or any of us. And as far as schedule-wise, like I'm limited as well. I, I, I work full-time, so a lot of my meetings have to be in the evening or Fridays. So, you know, that, that will decide some of my, where I can and can't, and again, I serve on five townships or participate. So ours will be a little bit more limited since we're more active with those numbers. Tim, did you have anything?
I don't, I don't.
Yes, sir.
Well, there are, there are, have been, there have been citizens that sit on some of our committees. And I know that there's a couple of here tonight or today that would like to.
Continue.
Continue or start even. Yep. Past commissioners that, I mean, Commissioner, uh, past Commissioner Quackenbutch has sat on substance abuse for a number of years and he'd like to remain. Now, Mr. Serbrook would like to sit on, and we voted on Mr. Serbrook back a couple of months ago, getting on the.
Battle Valley.
Sabo Valley, and I know he'd like to remain there. And I think he's willing to take on, uh, another one too, NEMSC.
Can, can those individuals reach, reach out to you?
They can.
Okay.
Make sure that names are put forward.
Perfect, okay.
And there may, maybe some other committees also out there that a citizen may want to, because a lot of, a lot of the board is, like you say, you're, you're tough on time. Your, your job restricts you to the time. And I know Roger does too, and his job's gonna restrict his time, especially during the day. So.
We will look at everybody's, uh, likes and wants and, and we'll discuss that, uh, at the meeting. Next week.
Yeah.
You want us, do you want us to bring with us prior to the meeting, a list of committees that we think we'd like to be on that fits our schedule so you can kinda look at it?
Well, could we get that information to you and then you could, uh, distribute to all of us if, 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 what would be the deadline on that Wednesday?
Um, let's see, the meeting is at night. So yeah, just do it by Wednesday, let's say by three o'clock Wednesday, and then I can get it out to everybody ahead of the meeting.
So we're gonna do the committees that have a meeting in that, in the Cal.
Right.
Okay.
Chairman, can you do that again?
Commissioner, what, uh, your, your wants, your likes, your interest? You can get it to Tim by Wednesday at three o'clock. He will distribute it then to all of us before the meeting Thursday, so then we can, we can talk about it Thursday and vote on it. Did you hear that, Commissioner?
I hear.
Okay.
Okay, I, I have one comment to let you know, and they meet, um, I think it's on the second Monday. Uh, I've applied to be on the, uh, MAC at the state level in NAMC.
Okay.
So just wanted to let you know that, so my Monday might be chewed up.
Thank you. Item six, B, Board of Commissioner Liaison Appointments. Members of the Board of Commissioners serve as liaisons to twenty-nine boards and commissioners throughout Omaha County, Region, and State. New in 2023, MSU Extension has asked that a commissioner be assigned to the MSU Extension Advisory Council. Some liaisons serve as a voting member while others serve as ex officio. Officio? Liaison appointments can be tabled to the next regular meeting agenda if commissioners need additional time for review. Would you guys also like to put that on for the next meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Chairman, I know I have a lot of interest.
Okay. So we will, we will, uh, get that information to Tim as well on, uh, by Wednesday, and we will talk about that on Thursday. Item seven, Resolution to Approve Calendar Year 2023 Meeting Schedule. Per the Open Meetings Act, a schedule of regular meetings must be posted by the county clerk within ten days of approval unless otherwise changed by the board. The proposed resolutions continues past practice of holding regular meetings of the board on the second Thursday of each month at nine AM and on the fourth Thursday of each month at 5:30 PM. And committee of the whole meetings on the first Thursday of each month at nine AM and the third Thursday of each month at 5:30 PM. The meeting held on the second Thursday of October shall be designated as the annual meeting as required by law. The board meets on Tuesday, on the Tuesday following the second Monday in April each year to equalize assessment rules and the manner provided by law. If any regular meetings fall and you recognize holiday, the board meets on the Tuesday immediately prior to the regularly scheduled Thursday meeting. This meeting schedule reflects past practice. The board may choose a different schedule at, at its discretion with statutory limitations. Discussion. Tim.
I could, I just, the conversations ahead of the meeting, there was a, a request that, uh, meeting material be provided more than three days ahead of the meeting. So you'll see on the schedule here, we've got the actual meeting date and then a deadline for material based on the agenda, which, uh, generally is, uh, gotten to you the Tuesday before the meeting by three o'clock. It was suggested that maybe a little bit more time would be nice, uh, whether that's Monday before or the Friday before. And as I explained to the commissioners asking about this, this is completely your call. Whatever you decided it's gonna be, that's what it will be, and we'll make sure that those deadlines are enforced. Uh, certainly understand that, um, you know, getting it at three o'clock on Tuesday maybe is not quite enough time for you to digest everything that's gonna be on the agenda for a Thursday morning meeting, for instance. So it certainly is a request. If you'd like to do that, this would be a great time to talk about it and then we can amend the schedule, uh, to reflect that. The deadline that you see on the schedule itself is actually the Monday ahead of the meeting. That's the deadline for any department or any other agency to get material to me to put on the agenda. And then my deadline is three o'clock the following day, so just to understand how that dynamic works. So I guess for you, I just would like to know what day you would like to receive the material and then the, the actual deadline for departments and agencies will back up one, one day from there. So.
I personally am okay with it. I like to stick with that deadline at three PM on Monday. Um, and then, and then the deadline to get it to us, but definitely within forty-eight hours before the, before the meeting. And I know we struggled with that initially a touch, but I think it, it seems like everybody has adjusted to it.
So the three PM on a Monday, you gotta have everything turned in.
To, to Tim, all the department heads, uh, yes, lots of officials.
But there's also a, a place in here for comments. I mean, when not comments, when you talk about the agenda, approve the agenda, any comment, any adjustments to the.
Correct.
So we can add stuff at the meeting if we had some big issues that come up, like to the day before.
Absolutely, and it can be discussed, yep.
Okay.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, I think she's addressing like matters from the floors on our agenda, uh, that you can bring something up. Uh, no, I don't have a problem. Monday, we can get all the department heads and everybody else to sing on the same page, that'd be great. I just like that. I know, I know Brett, I'd like to read the minutes ahead of time.
You will.
You know, good, good.
Yeah, I need to.
I know, I have trust in that, that'll happen.
I'm sorry.
No, I don't have a problem with that at all, and I think we've already agreed on the meeting schedule so far, so.
Commissioner Willsey?
Yeah, I'm fine with it.
We need to vote on that?
You do, um, it's like the author of the materials here has neglected to actually put the resolution on there. So if somebody might wanna make a motion to approve the meeting schedule, that'll be sufficient.
I have a motion to approve the calendar year 2023 meeting schedule.
I'm gonna, Brenda.
We have a motion from Commissioner Simmons. Do we have support?
I'll support it.
Some more from Commissioner Willsey, any discussion on that? Roll call vote. Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew. Charles Willsey.
Yes.
Item eight, public comment. Uh, Open Meetings Act requires that a person must be permitted to address a meeting of a public body under the rules established and recorded by the public body. Speakers are asked to state their name for the record, speak only to the chairperson, and to limit comments to three minutes or fewer. Is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment in the room? Come on up, sir.
Just one question, you adopted the rules of.
Procedure. Your name?
Man, show. And my question is, is that Robert's rules of order? Something different.
We have, we have.
Head sir, Commissioner, or excuse me.
Rules that the board adopted are their rules of procedure for conducting meetings and conducting the board's business. If there is formality needed, um, for whatever reason, the rules do state that they, the board will rely on Robert's rules, but.
I just wondered. Just curious.
Thank you. Any other public comment? In the room? Any public comment on the phone? Any public comment on the phone? Now we adjourn out of this meeting and go into the next one?
I'm moved to adjourn.
We have a mission, a motion from Commissioner Scott. We have a support to adjourn this meeting?
We got already?
We have another meeting. I'll support that. We have a motion to adjourn at nine twenty-eight. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries onto our next meeting.
You're not continuing this meeting until nine thirty.
Oh, we have three minutes.
Three minute break.
Better run. That's odd.
I think you will.
Craig's famous for running to the bathroom.
It's the only time that's gonna happen, probably.
Can I have a cup of coffee?
Pretty raw, I thought. But all the new.
I get a drink of coffee?
But they have.
How they, uh, but they have plenty of people. I told the director, so I'd be able to call it, say.
Well, I wanna be on the, the Budget and Finance Committee, that's what I want to be out there, so I can learn a lot, a lot more. And I talked to people when I was at the commissioner training, and I gave them my application, and I have communicated with them.
Okay.
And they said next week, you know, um, well, no, but I, I would like to be on. And it doesn't have to be necessarily that committee, but, but you know, I don't know what NIMSC is all about. I would love to be on NIMSC.
Big organization.
I, I know it is.
Where'd you go for breakfast?
That's why you need to figure, even if it's once a year, whatever, but, uh, I know absolutely nothing about it.
They've got a lot of programs, and they're done in our name, you know, they get grants. Our, several of our counties, so yeah. Huge though. Yeah, I think those MAC meetings, um, they'll let you do by Zoom as well, so if you, it's a bad weather day or something.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll talk to them about that, invite them to, it's a long travel. What do they do about the travel paper for when we went to certain county counties? The, the
Let me talk about that in, uh, me, the whole, there's actually a form that I'll send you the link to.
It's a blockchain.
It's going
Form is same, it's just automated now. Uh, just yesterday, it, uh,
I'm texting people here.
I can guide you through these. Great, make them as simple as it can, not that they're full proof.
Hey, Tom? Mr. Mayhew? Because real hearing
Yes, I know.
I tell you what's wonderful.
It didn't work for me, no.
This doesn't work for you? It doesn't work for you? All you gotta do is
Okay.
I'll pick it up. You can't hear it with it.
All right, yeah, I'm gonna have to move it here and get it worked. Go grab my phone.
Oh, she's back already.
We have nine thirty? Should we have nine thirty?
We need to say the pledge again.
Yes, absolutely. Oh, yeah.
We just can't start before nine thirty. I put it in the approximate time along the other one, it's getting
Can we start at?
Yeah. Yes, about thirty seconds.
Well, then, oh, and get, I mean, get there.
Better hurry.
Drink a lot of coffee this morning.
Okay, so you can sign these now. You can, you can, oh, sorry.
So I, and this is a, I didn't prepare for this, so that's, that's, this is just okay.
Yeah.
Okay, what do you?
Good.
You know how I got these? What do I sign this? I don't think there is a signature on it right here.
Yep.
Is it?
No.
There's none, yeah, box on the other page somewhere.
Can we sign after my name?
Uh, no.
No?
Um, I think this is the one, I think that's just a sheet that we filed.
Okay.
Ray, could you come up here? I wanna make sure that we signed everything. So.
Jenny, what part of Idaho was you in?
I was in Wyoming.
You were in Wyoming.
She only need to sign here or a square spot on there.
Wyoming.
Um.
Looks like
This is the one that Jenny signed.
Me and my kids went out. Me and my boys went out.
I seen that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This one.
Yeah, Veronica's over what they call Star Valley.
She where?
Star Valley, south of Jacksonville.
Oh.
Cast to sign that. She was the
I said in there.
I got stated. Here.
I think I'm gonna go home and get to work. I got my fellowship meeting.
There you go.
So, um, I, I did bring the original copy of that, but that's fine.
Well, she's got another one this
Yeah, I do, I do, um, what I really, really wanted her to sign was that, um,
I've met you a few times, I've seen it.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Now you're May years.
He looks interesting.
Right now you're back.
All right, guys. Brenda's, Brenda's back. Commissioner Scott's back.
Pretty good, I think things work.
Yeah, let's, let's roll.
All right, so.
Ready?
Just so I can hear.
Then my jerk.
Good. Commissioner Wiltie, signature first, we will do this on the pledge.
All you gotta do is say aye.
We got nine thirty-five, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Commissioner Wiltie's gonna leave us on the flash.
Are you ready?
I'm ready, go ahead.
I of the United States of America. Consider a power that for which stands on a nation, forgot, judicial, liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Say here.
Here.
Charles Welsey.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Greg Scott.
Here.
Item two, we got public comment. This is on agenda items only. There's another area for public comment for any subject matter. Is there any public comment on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone about agenda items only? Item three, appointments. We got three A, Ray Blamer, Transit Director, related to fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four Oglema Transit Budget. Come on up, Mr. Blamer. Thanks for joining us.
Well, this is for the two thousand and twenty-four Transit Budget. That's how we do things at Transit. Um, this, this first sheet that I sent is, is just a breakdown of all our expenses. There again, there, right off the top of my head, there, I, I go by what we spent last year, but I have to speculate on it. We're gonna spend basically two years from now. Times it's a little difficult. The top left-hand portion of it, this is our revenues. And it says state operating assistance, and you'll see that there's three, four point five times four nine percent. So that's what the state is going to reimburse us for all, um, legitimate expenses for that operating year. The one below it is a federal, and it right now it's at eighteen percent. Um, from last year's to this year's budget, I had about a three point two percent change, um, it increased about thirty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, wages went up about thirteen hundred. I did cut a few of that. Um, I think I cut overtime wages two thousand. I just basically left them all the same. I, I, I don't know what's gonna happen, uh, with this millage, so we don't have the money, we don't have the money, we'll, we'll have to cut. Is there any questions on it, th- this other? This other, um, three or four sheets of paper is actually what I sent in to MDA. And it's just not broke out as well as this. A lot, a lot of them are combined in this one.
Great, um, looking at those documents, the first one that, uh, the chair signed is just that the board chair signs the documents, which is actually in the board rules, so that's addressed. The second one, though, um, as I'm rereading this, uh, that's the resolution of intent that the board actually has to adopt.
Right.
The dollars that you're seeing there. So that'll have to appear on the agenda next Thursday for the formal vote. Uh, so we'll hold that. I know we've got Breck's signature on it, but we'll hold that.
Right, right. I, I actually have time to get this stuff submitted. That, that's why I'm having this meeting now.
Can you tell us as far as where you're at, as far as help, as far as buses, as far as?
Um, we actually have fourteen buses now, thirteen crew buses, and we just recently, um, got our, um, it's a transit van. Um, and it is on the road. You can drive that with a, with a chauffeur's license versus a P endorsement. Um, it, it, it's doing pretty good. The person that's driving it actually has a chauffeur's license. We, we really can't it's difficult to find anybody with a P endorsement, let alone try to train someone. And if they don't prior have a CDL, CDL's are getting hard to get. They really are. And you know that.
I have one.
Yeah, and you, yes, and you, and you go to the doctor now, and I mean there.
Yeah.
They're looking you
Every year now.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
What are your, like, uh, plans for the next year? Like, as far as growth, as far as maintenance, just a brief?
I, I don't know if you're aware of this, but we, we lost a millage. It, it wasn't presented. It was, it was due this year, and it wasn't presented for a vote. So of the two millages we had, we've lost one. That's a quarter of a million dollars. That, if we don't get back somehow, we're, we're gonna be in trouble.
How did we lose that?
It wasn't applied for. And, and I take full responsibility for it, but in the past, um, the county approached me about it, which no one, no one even matched it this year. It basically, it just slipped my mind.
We didn't realize that, that it was, it was expired?
Yeah.
It was the smaller of the two, wasn't it?
Well, they're both, they're both, um,
Oh, they were both the same, yeah.
Is this something that you do every year yourself, apply for?
Uh, I apply for, for this every year, but the millage, I believe that was a five-year one.
Tim, would you like to speak on that?
Ray, just a couple of questions, just to put clarity to this. The millage that expired taxes collected in November, or was that millage part of that collection?
I don't believe so.
There's some nodding going on here, thinking it might have been. We'll check that out. So I ask that because we do have a couple of opportunities, uh, for election prior to, um, the collection for twenty-three that could overcome the challenge. So I believe the election schedules, you could do May, August and November. But it's an off-year election, so your budget's gonna have to pay for the election. But it means a quarter million dollars, you know, fifty thousand dollars to get it is obviously a decent deal, but my point being, though, if the board were to approve putting that on a ballot at, for one of these elections that's already scheduled, then you won't necessarily miss a year of the revenue.
What would those months be on, please?
And
May, August, and what?
We'll defer to the clerk for clarification if I'm wrong, but it's May, August, and
No, I believe that is, I
But there's also discussion in Lansing about changing that all up, so that could, that's subject to change if legislature and governor do something with it, but right now, that's the schedule. Either way, we're gonna have November date. I know that for sure, so it's kinda late in the game, but
I will have to look into it. I'm I'm almost sure that I was told that I wouldn't get that millage for this, this year. The money that I, the money that's gonna come in this year.
Right.
That will, that'll definitely affect your budget next year.
Well.
Not so much this year, though, correct?
Right, if the federal and state governments have really all the trants, they've given us extra money because of COVID. So that's sitting in the bag. So we're good for now. But we don't wanna lose another quarter of a million dollars. And, and the thing of it is, with the two-third mills in today's money, that it's not enough. It's just not enough. We won't even be able to maintain what we're doing, let alone grow. All wages have gone up, and everything goes up.
So.
So.
Fuel costs?
I, I guess three quarters of a mill would be nice. A full mill would, would be what we need. Most of the other communities around us, they're all working under a mill. But if you think that's too much, we're gonna need something.
Your past one was three quarters of a mill? The one that expired was how much?
That was a third of a mill. Actually, point three oh, not a third, just point three oh. So between the two that we have, we had point six oh mills, which was adequate three years ago. Adequate to stay where we were at, not, not to grow too much. Um, but since COVID and the price of everything, who knows where it's gonna go? And what kind of money we're gonna need to, to operate?
So you need us to vote at the next meeting on your two thousand and twenty-four, your budget, correct?
Right.
Any questions for Mr. Blamer on, on his budget that he has on our iPads? Commissioner Scott?
Yes, uh, we, we put on that additional point three.
Right.
Uh, four years ago.
I don't even know when that was due.
I don't know.
I really don't know.
No, so this is the original.
The original one.
Okay. Uh, so yeah, we'll take a look at that. We, we, uh, we put on a, we put on, in off in an off cycle, we put on a millage request for a point three, that, uh, on additional. We didn't wanna open up the first one and add to it. We just put an additional point three on them, on a millage request in the past. So that supplemented at that point. Now we're, now we're back to that original
Exactly.
As expired.
And you, you know that, you know, I, I wanna maintain buses in Skidway Lake. It's impossible at this point.
Right.
I wanna maintain a bus in Rose City, the Rose City area. It's impossible. I just can't do it. I, I know.
It's gonna be really tough if we, if we find a, a method to get this point three put back in by having a millage request. It's still gonna be very tight.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
So you
We will just slowly.
Yeah.
They lose the money.
You have two, two millages for the transit, correct?
Right.
The one that expired and, okay. Now Breck just pulled up that if you wanna put it on, uh, the deadline is, is Tuesday, January twenty-fourth. For petitions to place county or local ballot questions on the ballot must be filed with the applicable local or county clerk by January twenty-fourth, so
That, for the May election.
For my second. I don't need the wording until February ninth, but
Is there any other election? Is there a school election?
Is there anything else? That's, that's a valid question.
No, I'm, well, no, I've not heard of anything. Nobody has said a word about anything.
What would be the cost of that for a special election? A rough estimate?
Uh.
Russ Common just had one, and theirs was thirty-five thousand.
Okay.
But that was Russ Common.
To do the election?
Yeah.
Tony White. Tony White, wasn't it? Uh, no, wait a minute. That was, that was the regular cycle.
Election, wasn't it? No.
They had a special.
Yes. Last year.
We went through all this when, when, with the MSU question back a few years ago, because that was brought up across of a
Special election.
A special election, and it couldn't come from, it couldn't come from that millage can't pay for it. You'll have to take
Out of his
You can't take the millage money and pay for the millage question. You'll have to take money out of your other part of your position, do that, but not the millage question.
Do you have anything to add to that?
No, it's
I have, I have a question.
Commissioner Wiltie?
So we're having this conversation simply because you forgot to bring this up for millage?
Yes, you could say that.
It wasn't past practice.
That way, it
Unfortunately.
You know, I only had this one time. And at the first of the year, Gary Clacking came to me and told me we've got a millage renew this year. Now, this is what we're gonna do, blah, 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 blah. So I assumed, which I should know, that the county would come to me when it was due, and we would discuss it. And I never heard a word, and very busy, and I skipped, slipped, slipped my mind.
There's deadlines for all of that?
I mean, I understand, but I think this is something, I mean, this, I mean, that's a big blunder.
Oh, I know it is.
You gotta make sure that's never happens again. This is, it can't ever happen.
I know that. Um.
Tim, did you have anything to add to it?
Hey.
I'm, I'm sorry, were you done?
But just, um, listening to the clerk, just for clarification, so by the twenty-fourth, there just simply needs to be a resolution of intent.
Correct.
And the language by the ninth, so the opportunity then, um, you know, to pass a resolution next week of intent, and then your next committee of the whole. And then your next committee, the whole will bring language forward with calculations about how much is brought in and what your needs are and so on. We can have that conversation. And then work with the county attorney to develop the language. We need to match whatever it is the board's intent is. So then the following meeting, which is what, the twenty-sixth? Um, you can actually have a resolution ready to go with the language in it, or it looks like we may even have an opportunity in February, so if we're not. Completely comfortable after the next committee, the whole meeting. Still another opportunity to have conversation to ferret out whatever we need to do to meet the May deadline. Remember, there's also August and November, so if things go awry, there's still another opportunity to get it in this year. But I just want to make sure we got the sequencing right, so it's just a resolution of intent that would be needed for Thursday.
And and when is the next one due? When when does it expire?
April or August?
I can look into it, I'm not sure. I definitely think before, I think we need more information in front of us. What's something a special election is gonna cost? How much uh revenue loss for this this uh millage? Um, I I think we need more information in front of us, but it sounds like we have a little bit of time. And also.
And we have a lot of capital.
And moving forward, if if we wait for those other dates, there may be other millages. This may not be the only one.
We'll check the millage dates. I I know I can't think of another one because we just passed a few of them. I mean, the. EMS that we did nine one one, well, we're off, we're off election cycle this year.
I was just gonna say the schools, that's a big one.
We just, that was around twenty.
What? Oh, for the special election for the school was about twenty thousand, okay. We can just have more information, I think it'd be appreciated. Uh, back to item one, the twenty twenty-four Oma transit budget, so we will, can we have that on the uh. Meeting for uh uh resolution? Any comments on the budget? On the budget, any comments on the budget?
Well, it it does, you know, and the comment was made about a blunder, because. Everybody's changed with that last election, so when you talk about blunders, you know, the clerk used to do a lot of things that we assumed that it's gonna, but the new clerk wouldn't know that. You know, you understand.
We now have an administrator too, who we, he's taken half.
But but when you talk about a blunder, it's like everything's, everything changed.
Oh, yeah.
So it's a learning process for for him, because he expected the clerk to tell him, because didn't the past, because Gary just did. But when you change and you have everybody knew, you know, you have to, you have to learn all this stuff. You don't even, you're not even aware of it.
Who's responsibility moving forward, Mr. Blamers? Uh, whose responsibility is this gonna be moving forward?
Typically, it's the agency that's receiving the millage, but want to bring the information forward. You might recall, I think it was last year when we did the nine one one millage, actually brought language to us. Actually neglected to initially, again, another one of those learning curves. They thought they could just submit it to the clerk and they did so by the deadline and no, the board actually has to approve that, so. We went through all that last year, same type of a process. Um, so uh, that's that's what I would. Actually, put that responsibility on the agency that receives the funds.
Exactly.
I mean, I mean, it's good for you to know that, and if we didn't, you keep that to you, well, you know.
Can we?
That's why I want to know when the next one is, you know, am I even gonna be around for?
And would that be hard? I'm sorry, Mr. Blamer, would that be hard for you to put together a a brief memo to each? Each uh division uh with uh expiration? And and let them know that it is their responsibility moving forward? Would that be difficult? Could you do that? That way it takes the responsibility off of of you guys and then they're aware. That this is how we're practicing moving forward, so this doesn't happen again, hopefully?
Yeah.
Is that fair?
Well, I'm not very um. I'm embarrassed by it actually, but there's nothing I can do about it, so I.
Mr. Blamer, it's been a rough year with COVID. You've been short-staffed. We know that.
Gotten worse and worse and worse and. As it turns out, I think I'm gonna lose two more full-time employees by this summer.
Now, did you want to add anything to item three two? We have the transit millage. Is that?
No, we had the transit millage and and um Tim said we were gonna dis- we were gonna discuss the village. Um, other than that, no, um. Maybe at some future point. I believe that if I could hire. Some full-time people, I might be able to get adequate help. I mean, right now. I've got some people that only want to work four days a week, you know, they're. They're already retired and they're doing all the work they want to do. On the days that they're off, we're struggling just just to meet. The quota of passengers that need to ride on those days, and where we are at. Two thirds, possibly two thirds of what we were transporting before COVID. Before COVID. We were two sixty-five to three hundred a day. Now we're. Hundred thirty-five to maybe some two hundred, two hundred uh person days like on the third of the month.
Are those numbers down because not as many people are utilizing the transit or because you don't have the support staff to transport that?
Partly all of it. Some people are still afraid to ride the transit, no doubt about that. But it it could be because, well. In the afternoon, I've got, I've got, I've got a span twelve hours. So I've got people in the morning and we meet them in the morning. We've got people going to work. You name it. But I need them in the afternoon also. And during during uh like about three o'clock to four thirty, we are at capacity. We have people waiting for an hour. To go home, two blocks to home, they're upset about it. And I can't blame them, but there's nothing we can do about it.
So as far as this item on here, the transit millage, I I think we've covered that. Can we just get more information and and discuss it at the next meeting as well?
We can, just to clarify though, would you still like to have a resolution of intent for the next meeting, which we'll cover if you're satisfied. Uh, with the conversation, getting it on to the May ballot. If not, then we're gonna have to wait for the August ballot, which buys more time, but it's also August, so we're getting closer to the to the end of the year. And the resolution of intent, and the clerk can clarify, it's not complicate you to put a millage out there. Would that be correct?
Uh, yeah, correct.
So so if we get to a point and whatever the February deadline was and we still aren't happy. Then we don't go forward in May, we go forward in August or whatever that future date is, but we would have to lock in a resolution at the next meeting. To meet the January twenty-fourth deadline, uh, or something of a tenth, that just that we intend to put a millage on the ballot in May.
And are you talking just to just to reinstate the third of the the point three?
Right now, it's just in a resolution of intent. That conversation then would happen at the next committee, the whole, but we'll break down all the costs and figure out what the best. Uh, number is to plug in and how many years.
As far as our costs. They're uncontrollable. You know what I mean? I can't control how many. Um, how um many parts we're gonna have to buy for our buses in a year. There's no control over that. There's really no control over any of this. Fuel is. Speculating. We did, I think, eighty-seven thousand in fuel last year, so.
Well, the only control you have is do not overspend your budget. That's the only control you have. So you, when you get to the end of your budget, that's it. That's it.
But 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 it's not that simple.
I I know it isn't that simple, but it that is the only control you have.
We've got. We've got.
The question I got.
This, 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 that.
The question I got, Ray, is at the end of fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, which was. September thirtieth of the last September thirtieth, was there any money left over? Any fund balance left?
We have a lot of fund balance.
But was there any left from that fiscal year?
We didn't spend the budget, now, if that's what you're getting.
That's what I'm getting at.
And in.
So then you have one balance from before that.
In July, I was talking to M dot and we cut back on. How much state operating we're going to get from them to accommodate the fund balance or the, but not going to hit the budget.
I would like to see all those figures. Uh, can you, can you uh provide those to us?
Okay.
As far as what your fund balance is um after this budget, where you're and I think before we make an educated decision.
Before you look that over, I will tell you, as I stated before, the state, the federal government very good to us. Last year. Bets gave us forty percent, not eighteen, they gave us forty percent. Um, the year before. I think state operating was at thirty-five, and I think they bumped that to forty percent. Um. I think we got a little bit extra the year before that also, so that that's where all this fund balances come from.
Well, I.
All of this extra money.
I I think what our our past practice was is if 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 uh departments had a fund balance, I mean, some of our villages were were cut because of uh. Because people are hurting out there. So I think before we make a decision as far as going out and asking the asking the public this, we need this information.
Thing of it is with the fund balance. If I go one year without any money from the state or federal government, we'll we'll be basically, we'd be broke. We can't raise our prices.
Right.
That's impossible, you know. Our, our fair box revenue is. Six and a half percent of our budget. You know, with without really figuring it out, that off the top of my head, that's what I'm saying it is.
So would you guys like a resolution put on at the next uh meeting next week? Commissioner Simmons? Yes or no?
Yeah, if he's. Satisfied with that, yeah.
Commissioner Mayhew? Commissioner Wiltsey?
I I do, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Um, so earlier you were saying about Skidway and Rose City.
Right.
The service right now, not even one.
We are sending a bus there four times a day before I started twice a day. So we send a bus over there, it leaves, it leaves West Branch somewhere between quarter to eight, quarter after eight, depends on if we have to. Pick up people from West Branch and take them to Skidway or not. Pick the people up, we bring them into town. The bus goes back from West Branch at eleven thirty. Comes back to town, goes back at two thirty, comes back to town, goes back at five P M. The same with the Rose City, Lupton, Silk Ranch area.
And then, so off, I think it was in November, you were here speaking to the board, and I was just a spectator. And have we done anything since then to board this hiring process? Cause I mean, sadly, that's one.
I have attempted to hire. Um, I have hired a a couple of people. That are not gonna be able to, but I'm training them to be dispatchers, because we need both. In the past. We had drivers and we had dispatchers that were combined. They drove sometimes and they dispatched sometimes. Um, dispatching for one reason or another is. Getting to be an issue. People are. What's the term I should use, but they they just demand stuff, and and if you're late, they're calling, they're complaining, why are you late?
It's the stress.
Yes, yes, it is. And dispatchers, they don't, sometimes they don't last that long. It just burns them out. It it's tough. It's a tough job. As far as dispatching, that's something I never learned was the dispatch software. I had no desire to learn it, or maybe the knowledge, you know, I'm sixty-eight year old guy, I don't have a lot of uh. Computer training under my belt, so. Um, I have. I've lost. I believe three that I hired. Went to went to other, well, one guy worked in Gladwin and worked here and he quit and went to work for Gladwin. Um, another one left the state. Um, I I have this other um. Driver hired, but she only has a showers license, and we have to get her trained. To get a P endorsement, but that's not a simple process. Last year, we spent ten thousand dollars. On a system that's tied into the federal government. To document everything we do in training people to get their C D L and their P endorsement. That's how far this has come. And we have to document every day what they do, and the federal government has access to all of that information. I'm not a trainer. No one at our facility is a trainer, so we're doing the best we can. Um, I I I just don't know what else to say. We we don't have any money to hire anyone. What I mean to, all that's gonna do is just increase our budget. Hire anyone that's gonna gonna be a trainer or this or that. We could. Ross Common County. They have a trainer. That possibly could train our drivers for us, but it's gonna be. Thirty-five hundred, five thousand dollars to train a driver. I I don't know, that's just, that's just a guess. It might not be that much. But that would alleviate. Our training. And basically, we don't have anyone that can train it, train to do a C D L. That that person has been sent out and trained. To be a trainer. So it's. It's just tough all the way around, and who would have guessed that? Running a transit is gonna become this difficult. And I'm not gonna be around that much longer, and we should consider. At some point, trying to get someone and and. Trying to train them, but who that's gonna be, I I don't know, but it's no one that works with transit, I can tell you that.
That's fair.
So. We good?
Yeah, what, Commissioner Scott, did you have any questions? Did you want this put on for a resolution?
Yeah, I just soon have a resolution for ten. Uh, the particulars, we still gotta work out. Whether or not. Will remain the same, or you had the question, would it would would it remain at point three oh? It doesn't have to, because this is expired. It would be, you'd be going after a brand new millage question, so.
And and would it, and it that.
It could be point three five.
So so that would also eliminate, you know, do we need two villages?
Well, not because they don't, they don't run concurrent terms. And I don't think we want to open, we don't want to stop the one that's in there and add to it. That's that was the question before.
Right.
You know, then you take the risk of losing it all. You know, so uh, you know, I mean, we we have to have some discussion, we're gonna have to have some. Like you say, you want to see some financials, we should, because we'll have this. This has to be sold, and you'll have to, you'll have to sell to the, to the voter, why, you know, so.
So we have the majority to put to put it on uh a resolution. I I I personally would would not. At this point in time, I would like more information, but but majority uh would like it put on, so we will put it on and and we will vote on it next week.
After this little last conversation, I'll retract that. I would, I'd like to add some more.
Still got, so.
You'll vote on it, so. Minds change next week, I mean, vote it up or down.
Right, but there's a majority now that would like it put on, so. Thank you, Ray.
Yeah, thank you. See ya.
Item three B, Brian Gilbert, Sheriff, related to sale of dog licenses. Sheriff, come on up.
Sorry, you got me today.
Oh, gosh. Wasn't a little bit of a smile? Good morning.
Morning, Paul, for sure, under Sheriff, what kind of sheriff's office? Hold on, my other hat, just briefly on that last conversation, EMS discussed briefly at their meetings of the village for a clip. So there might be an opportunity to have more than one village. And so I'll reach out to the director and get back to you, Tim, if that's all right with the board.
Had you shared cost of.
Yeah. It was briefly discussed, it really didn't get off the floor very much, but with the current conversation, I think it could be. Spoke at, especially being an off season, so. Congratulations on your election, swearing in today in your two-year term.
Thank you, sir.
We'll get into it now. Um, animal control, first and foremost, we have the treasurer and animal control officer came to us with an idea to. Sell dog licenses as part of the adoption process. Took that to, you know, what county uh attorney? He said it didn't need to be added as an amendment to the current contract between the shelter and animal control. Drafted up this contract should have in your packets uh between the treasurer and animal controller, treasurer and the shelter. Um, basically, they're gonna sell animal, dog licenses as part of the adoption program. All that money will come back minus one dollar currently as it's in the contract. The rest of the money will come back to treasurer's office as part of the process. And uh, we'll have more dog license sold throughout the county. So you have a contract. If the board approves it, then they'll swear in employees at the.
If the board approves it, then they'll swear in employees at the shelter as deputy treasurers. And they will be able to take money on behalf of the county and that money would then come back and patrol officer to the treasurer's office. So. And Shelter Board has reviewed this. Minus one correction as far as the name of the shelter, they just asked the board, is it possible to get more than a dollar? Um, from my conversation with the treasurer, the the townships that sell it, the max is a dollar, but. I just wanted to bring that, that was from the board of the shelter themselves. If they could possibly get more than a dollar.
We sell dog licenses now, correct?
Not at the shelter.
Oh, so this is, I'm sorry. Okay, so that's the difference of what we currently do.
So they they sell licenses at townships, municipalities throughout the county. This would enable the shelter to sell them. As part of the adoption program. So when one of their dogs is adopted out of the shelter, there'll be the adoption fee, some medical cost, plus the dog license fee. They would keep a dollar, who has to come back and call it.
How much does a dog license cost?
Uh, it's twenty.
Treasurer, is that correct?
Ten and fifteen and then twenty.
How much did the shelter want?
They didn't specify, they just asked if it's possible to get more than a dollar.
Ten and fifteen, why?
If the pet is fixed or not fixed.
Oh, is that right? Well, I ought to call I R S then. I should get a discount on my tax.
Questions, comments, Commissioner Scott?
Um, it's going to, with that, it's going to twenty and thirty, or?
Only if the dog license is purchased late after February twenty eighth. If it's a new adoption, a new pet to the owner, it's still regular price. So every adoption would be a new dog to the owner, maybe paying the ten dollars or the six dollars. The shelter would keep the dollar, the other cost would come back to us as revenue.
Um.
Increasing safety because you have to have a rabies vaccination or to get a dog license, so you're increasing safety, public safety, you're increasing revenue to the county. Extra revenue for the shelter, it's a win-win for everyone.
How much uh, how much does it cost to? Estimated cost to uh administer a dog license?
It costs to administer.
For your your department, what, is there a cost? There has to be a cost.
We have an employee who has to enter the data into the software.
Right, is there, is there a license that we, is there a tag or something?
That we purchase from a supplier.
Okay, so there's some costs there. So you think a dollar, two dollars to to to. Cost wise? Well, is you think it's under a buck?
I'm sure it is.
Then I wouldn't have any problem sharing. Uh, a little bit more, but as soon as we give a little bit more to the, to the uh shelter, I ma- would imagine that the townships will want. An increase also.
What was that, treasure?
I would, my suggestion was to leave it the same, one dollar. All of it, there is a handful of townships, not all, but some townships that do the dog license sales during tax collection season. And then they return the um unsold tags, the sold tags, all of that information to us, along with the revenue is entered into our software. My recommendation is to make the shelter the same as the township, they receive a dollar for their work, the rest of it is revenue to the county.
Commissioner Wiltie.
How many licenses do we have this past year? How many dog licenses do we have coming?
I do, that would be hard.
Saw that too.
Thousand?
Oh.
No.
Three hundred?
Four hundred.
Four hundred?
Between four and six hundred, is my estimate.
Somewhere in that ballpark, I I know he's got that number.
So the majority of the dogs are coming, are not licensed. That's all that's we have. They made them ten percent of the dogs.
Unfortunately, a lot of the general public doesn't realize that it is a law to license your pet. Some people, I've had people, in fact, Kelly herself has said, don't you only have to have a license if you live in city limits? No, the law states that you have a dog in the state of Michigan, that pet is to be licensed statewide. The general public doesn't know that. We did do a promotion when I first came into office to bring awareness to the law. We did a gift basket giveaway to help bring awareness, bring out ads in the paper, but. Unfortunately, the general public doesn't know that if they own a dog, it has to be licensed.
What's nice about this is that, you know, there's a lot of dogs that are adopted. So you're gonna get an increase.
Yeah.
Instead of them adopting it and forgetting the government gets the license, they're gonna get that as part of the adoption process.
Commissioner. Commissioner Simmons.
So the way you do it now is they bring the lights in into you and you re- record them in the in the. In the, in the database, right?
From the townships that are selling them, yes, otherwise the general public comes to our office to purchase.
Well, then the animal shelter can do the same thing. So I think a dollar's plenty. I think a dollar is plenty.
Just what the board asked, so I brought that to you.
Commissioner Mayhew.
Cause we're, we're gonna be doing all the administrative work.
Well, and animal control will be bringing the paperwork.
Cut.
Money back to the counties.
And we pay them to house them for such a period of time before they're adopted.
You have that contract, and they're part of animal control processes that. Money that's going up there, so.
Commissioner Mayhew. Are you okay with the one dollar to the animal shelter?
I guess so.
I would like to maintain the dollar as well.
Well, so give them feedback, so they just asked.
Okay, so we need that.
Municipalities are selling them. And just during tax time?
And only during tax reflection.
Really? It's the city of West Branch, you guys sell them?
They quit selling them for some years back, haven't been doing it anymore, still.
Rose City doesn't either on a regular basis, so. I would almost think so.
Long time ago, but for some reason they backed off.
We should check with the library, they they want money, they should sell dog licenses, they can make some money. They're asking us.
Do you need that put on for a resolution?
If you would. The board's in favor of it, they just have those two questions.
Okay.
The the name, the issue, the brave family shelters, it's a little bit different in the contracts.
Our legal has to look at the contract, correct?
Legal prepared that contract, so instead of that change.
It was brought to them and Donald put this contract together, so.
Okay. Item two, Enbridge Grant, is that you as well?
Yeah, that's me as well, we uh.
For you or for somebody else?
It's for the sheriff's office. Deputy matter did submit for Enbridge. Uh, and was awarded seventy-five hundred dollars from sheriff's office as part of the. The oil line pipeline that runs through our county, so we have that. He awarded that shortly. Uh, we do have plans to use that money to upgrade. A few more of our portable radios for deputies, since we've increased our staffing levels. We're using outdated radios to keep them on the road. So we're gonna use that money to get them. In line with the rest of our radios.
It's not that it's being a brain in particular use, it's not good, and it's not matching.
Not matching, seventy-five hundred dollars spent as you do it in a department, so.
Perfect, you just need a resi.
Just a resolution to accept, Deputy Matter did a good job, he continues to seek out grants for us. Every opportunity and get some, lose some.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item for discussion items, cost allocation plan for A.
You've got a document from Maximus in the uh. Support material. Uh, this is a cost allocation plan, it's a process we go through each year. To determine the costs of each department on reimbursed type of a program. I'm gonna use childcare fund as an example. So as the childcare uh program progresses through the year. Uh, some of that money is reimbursed through the state, but the state recognizes that it isn't just the childcare staff that incur costs. The treasurer, for instance, will have incurred some cost to accommodate the transactions that have to go on, cutting checks. Making sure the invoices match, making sure budgets balance. Uh, so what the cost allocation plan does is tells us just how much of the treasurer's time. Goes into reimbursements for childcare fund, and then the uh. Friend of the court is able to incorporate that into what is sent to the state for reimbursement to the county. So what this does is just verifies for the state what those percentages are, and there may be other departments, uh, think of our janitors, for instance, they're cleaning the buildings. There's some cost. Yeah, you have, um, you know, theoretically, even our security in this building, uh, maybe a percentage of that cost. Could be captured, I'm not saying all that's true, but nevertheless, you get the concept. Our current contract expired at the end of the fiscal year twenty-one, which uh we just received that document here a few months ago. But the proposal for Maximus is, is to maintain the cost at seven thousand dollars annually. For uh fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-three, so they would look at when the audit is finished, all the costs that went into twenty-two. And calculate what those formulas should look like. Uh, we would be guaranteed fiscal years twenty-two and twenty-three at seven thousand with an option to continue the contract. For fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five at that same rate. Uh, I would strongly recommend that uh you put a resolution on to approve that contract, and we'll be able to. Think that process, it's worked pretty well for us.
Same amount as previous?
Same amount.
Change. Now, this isn't something that, and maybe I'm not understanding, this isn't something that our our new software is able to do?
It's uh. Sort of like a mini audit, um, could we do it internally? Yeah, we probably could, but uh I'm not sure that we have anyone. With the expertise on staff. And the time to be able to put into it to do the work. It's very nice having the independent third party come in and say, these are what these costs are versus uh even a biased employee, say biased in a good way. Um, putting that together, uh, it uh, and I'm not sure what the rules of the state are, I'm not sure they would even allow us to do it ourselves. I think they want that third party to come in and make that review.
How many years have we been doing that?
Forever.
Okay, okay. Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, we have done this for awful long time. I know I voted on this in the pre- in previous years. Um, this is no different than why we brought Mayor Cost- Costman in here. The only reason why we don't, same thing, we do an annual audit, and it's, it's that, and this is the same thing that I've just. Asking the treasurer about costs. To do with those dog licenses. There is a cost for every service that we provide, and we need to know what it is and how it does it break down and everything else. Uh, to explain to people where their money goes. You know, people pay us for services upfront, and then, of course, then we make sure that we provide those services, so. I think it's a, it's, it's the full spectrum. Uh, uh, reason why we do this, so it's another check and balance.
Commissioner Wiltie?
Yeah, I support.
Commissioner Simmons. Commissioner Mayhew. Okay, we'll have, we'll put that on for a resolution. Item four B, regional juvenile center concept update.
Okay. Yeah, Michael's here to provide support.
Come on up.
That's what got you here is.
The other sheriff didn't think he was gonna talk.
So we were approached by Gladwin County uh in November, I believe it was, with the idea of looking into. Um, putting, putting up a building, really, uh, some infrastructure for juveniles that uh are. Uh, who go through the court system. Uh, as you know, with through the childcare fund is the main activity for this, uh, as juveniles come through, they need to be placed in a. Uh, you know, what's called a facility of, but.
Secure detention center. This is short term, this is not residential treatment, um, this is for new youth who are coming over the jurisdiction of the court, who might be a danger to themselves or the community. Uh, that need to be housed temporarily while their court case proceeds until we can determine whether or not there are services we can. Put in place to keep them safely in the community. Um, we currently use Isabella Saginaw Bay. Um, county um facilities uh to house youths, youth in this manner. Um, but it's becoming increasingly more difficult to find. That's um, we've housed in Jackson, we've housed in Wayne County, we've housed just since COVID. Um, and with the increase um in in age eligibility of minors to seventeen, we've seen a decrease in availability of beds when we need an emergency.
So this is just for temporary placement while they're they're uh ruling?
Yes, we, the the facility across the street, we put in place to to decrease residential treatment, which is.
Correct, so that's not residential, this, you're talking about.
Things, okay, your detention is. Secure detention.
That's not considered across the street, secure detention, correct?
That is pulled over, that's just temporary until we can get them in front of a.
Right, okay.
So uh Gladwin County approached just with the thought, approached us and a couple of other counties, with the thought of. A group of counties going together and consider a regional facility to to accommodate the needs of all the counties. Uh, this is not an inexpensive proposition, when a child has to be put into this uh system, uh, the dollars really start to ring up in a hurry. And each of our counties realizes that there may be an opportunity here to do so a little less expensive of a rate, but also provide. Some sort of assurance that there is gonna be a bed available when it's needed, which can also be a challenge. So a meeting was held on December fifteenth, unfortunately, both Michael and I were in COVID quarantine protocol, we could not attend. But the meeting went on anyway with, uh, and actually an additional county joined us, so it was Gladwin, Roscommon, Claire, Wexford, and Ogumaw. Uh, that were uh considering this uh multi-county approach. Uh, Clark County has since backed off, um, they aren't convinced that it would work for them necessarily, um, I respectfully disagree, I think it would work very well for them. But that's their call. Uh, I think there is opportunity for other counties to get involved in the conversation as we progress, I could see an Aaron Eck, I ask go, ask go it up. Maybe even joining in the effort as well. So conceptually, the counties that met outside of Claire, thought that this was definitely worth pursuing, and now we will get together again to talk about what those next steps might be. Gladwin County is very eager to move forward with this, to the point that they had actually invited somebody to the meeting. On December fifteenth, talk about cost of building a structure, and I think this is where Clark County said, whoa, we're not.
Right, right.
Wanting to commit anything, uh, which, which is, I I think the Roscommon County commander lead in some online conversations. About let's just wait and get our concept formulated first, and then we'll talk about costs and where to locate the facility. Which is exactly, I think, the process that needs to happen. We need to have people like Michael and Judge Williams at the table to help guide what this would look like. And just, uh, what would we be talking about in terms of an annual commitment? How many beds would be all be allocated? Uh. What happens if we don't have enough people to put in those beds? Can we then rent them out, and how would that look? Uh, all very good and very valid um issues to discuss, but I think we need to have those conversations and settle on some of that before we start. Talking about bricks and mortar and where we might host the building. So that's gonna be an ongoing conversation that I want the boards to be aware of. Uh, that we're gonna continue to have, and then hopefully. Within a short amount of time, we'll be able to start talking proposals with the other counties about how this would look. And uh what kind of commitment would we be talking about? We'd also be able to compare that to costs that are already incurred uh with the county and look at what potential savings might be. Uh, would also wanna point out that if all went according to plan and this building was up and operating. We are not directing the judge to use that facility. You may have an individual coming before the judge that the treatment. Uh, opportunities in that facility just don't match the need of the individual child, so they still may need to assign somebody to the Wayne County or the Isabella or wherever. Where those needs can be met, if we're not able to do it uh within this facility. But that call still will remain with the court and not, obviously with the board, which we're not involved with anyway, so that's not a change. But understand that this is not necessarily a catch-all, but it's certainly gonna, I think, take a bite out of some of the expenses. That we already see and have the added benefit of keeping uh some of these kids a little more locally. Uh, as opposed to shipping them down to Detroit or wherever else we might have to go. So it's just an update, you're not being asked to do anything right now, but we wanna make sure that you're aware that this is happening. And if at any point you wanna pull out, of course, we're gonna wanna know that so that we can uh mislead our neighboring counties.
I, I think this is excellent, absolutely excellent, and it'll be interesting as far as a cost analysis moving forward. Even in the next year, what has saved us with that, that facility across the street is is.
Yeah, we're still working on those numbers, so. Um, just to give you a a brief, in the last five years, we averaged thirteen youth a year needing to be placed in a secured detention facility. Um, in fiscal year nineteen, I went back pre-COVID because they really shut down during COVID. Fiscal year nineteen, we're averaging thirty-nine nights a month. Um, in secured detention, um, and that was, you're looking at anywhere from on the low end a hundred and twenty-five up to two hundred dollars a night. Uh, per month, um, that would be billed that way. And then we, fifty percent of that comes back to us through the childcare fund, but that initial cost, um, with with. With with this type is is one that we pay and then they reimburse us, so roughly thirty nine, uh, nights a month. Um, in fiscal year nineteen, so we're not, we're not near that right now, but. That is certainly during, uh, depending on the behavior of the youth in the community, and it's it's certainly possible.
Right now, this is just discussion.
Justice, right?
Thank you for the information, any questions for him, Commissioner Scott or Commissioner Woltzey, glad?
I know you gave us that five-year average thirteen per year, what currently do we have right now in secured detention?
I I didn't pull that information, I don't know off the top of my head. So I'm, I'm not working with the youth, I'm working with the billing, so, um, I can, I can get that number for you though.
The childcare is so unpredictable, um, as far as a cost to the county, it's extremely unpredictable. Um, and it's very, very costly. It has been.
Yeah, when.
And that's.
When the commissioners, when the new commissioners get a chance to look at the claims, you will see it's it's astronomical. I mean, you you, a hundred and sixty dollars a night is the low side.
And that, well, secured detention, so residential treatment, we're talking some cases, three hundred and fifty dollars a night.
Yeah.
Uh, that's long-term, so when if a kid is in resident, if a kid is in residential treatment or youth is in residential treatment. Uh, the likelihood that that's going to be a long-term month, month after month after month placement. Um, is likely.
Yeah.
Uh, we've determined that there are not enough services in the community to keep the community safe and that child safe, they need to be in residential treatment. Um, where they do receive some treatment, but, um. You know, the judge determines that that's the best option or in in consort with DHHS, uh, to. Um, that that's a long-term costed, like I said, up to three hundred and fifty dollars a night. This is short-term, right, you know, it might be two weeks, might be. On the weekends when they're not in school, you know, so they it fluctuates a little bit.
But for commissioners' knowledge. Under our budget, we call it childcare, so when somebody comes to you and says, you guys provide childcare, it's not daycare. Okay, childcare is this, and, and I can tell you that Roscommon County asked four years ago for a mileage to pay for it, and it was defeated. And it was defeated pretty soundly. It's it's un- it's unbelievable, but. You know, you're talking about youth, and yet. The voter's not connecting with it, I don't know if it's. The way we label it or the way we sell it or what, but. This is a big problem across all the counties in Michigan and probably all the counties in the United States. For that matter.
It's it's very unpredictable, very costly, and you have no control over it. And I'm sure. Pretty much sums it up, Commissioner.
Couple of questions. Um, now, I don't know when we send these children someplace, if these counties that are, uh. Taking these children and if they're charging us more than what they charge the normal. And in their own county, who who would, uh, staff this? And it would seem like there'd have to be people who have, uh, specialties to do this, and that's not, that doesn't come for free, so. If it if it's costing them that much to 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 house overnight. Uh, are they charging us more than what they charge all the others in there?
You mean like outer county costs?
Yeah.
I would think so.
So if, I'm I'm sorry, if you're talking Isabella Bay, the the places that I mentioned, we typically get a published rate. Um, if that's, if if that's going to change or fluctuate, we we. We will get an email from them to tell us, hey, our our rate is going up from one sixty to one seventy this year, just after. So whether or not that means Crawford County is, if they house someone in that same place, are they getting the same letter, that I couldn't tell you off the top of my head.
Well, that probably needs to be researched, and and another thing is, i- if they're if they're charging us what it costs them. Then it's gonna cost us the same. To house them. So we we will have the cost to house them, plus we're gonna have to cost the building and the maintenance of that building.
Well, that. If we could do multiple counties, though, we could keep those, a lot of those infrastructure costs down.
We could charge.
If every county has a unit, then everybody's gonna pay the same, now, if you can collect. Into altered, multiple counties into one.
Right.
Then your infrastructure costs be one instead of three.
Well, then, then they agree, we'd have to read that, they'd have to pay if they had kids here or not.
And and that's where, uh, and that's what Tim was talking about when he was, when when he said we we need to look at and get together and start looking at the options of the. Is, is Gladwin County gonna cover the cost of the entire thing? In in in, if we help with some aspect of that, we get a a lesser rate. You know, I mean, that's one example, that's not necessarily what we're looking to do. But that's a, that's one possibility of of this group of people coming together to say, hey, we have a problem, how do we solve it?
Right.
Let's look at all of the options, and is there a way for all of us to have less, um, expense of doing so? Certainly, if we get to the end of that discussion and we realize, hey, this is gonna be a hundred thousand dollars more a year than what we're spending now to house. Youth in other counties, it's, you know.
Right.
I think these discussions are are excellent, and I appreciate.
But we have another facility in this county, it was supposed to cost X amount of dollars. And it costs astronomically more to operate this place. And the same thing had happened here. You know, you you need to have, there's no guarantee, you have a lot of unknowns in this equation.
Right, right now, it's just discussion. And I ca- we need a very thorough cost analysis, but I appreciate, I appreciate this.
And what are you gonna do with those unknowns, for instance? There are other jails around here that have built their own jails and not sending people here anymore. So now we're not getting, we're not getting those funds. You know, that's an unknown, is is something like that gonna happen here?
Well.
Don't have any people, I don't know.
Yes, you gotta back up to your, your first question.
Yeah.
Was, are these counties charging us more than what it's costing them for theirs, or are they charging us less?
Right.
Now, I would think it's the price that they're charging. They're, they're, they they are. Covering all their costs.
Of course they would.
Well, you say that, of course they do. In the, in the other respect, though. When you say the jails, that doesn't happen all the time in the jails, they don't charge what but costs. Them in their counties.
That's right, it was dependent on the the population in there, now the pop- population has diminished significantly.
I I.
Who's picking up that tab?
I I agree with your guys' discussion, but I think right now, thank you for the information, continue moving forward with at least discussion, and I think it's great that that. Surrounding, uh, counties are collaborating and in talking about, um, projects and possible, uh. Resolutions, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Item four, emergency purchase nature park fence.
Okay, this is, um, purchase that under our, um. Purchasing procedure policy needs to be brought to you just for information. Little bit of background, uh, the way our purchasing policy works, any cost that's under fifteen hundred dollars, the department heads are authorized to make those purchases. So long as the funds are budgeted. Anything between fifteen hundred and five thousand dollars requires typically. Free quotes and, uh, sign off from the claims committee, um. Which, uh, we'll talk about, actually, it happens automatically, uh, and then the purchase can be made, but again, free quotes required. Sign off of the committee, and then the purchase can be made. Any purchase over five thousand dollars requires a more formal process called a request for proposals, or maybe through an invitation to bid. Where we put forward some specifications and then we take, uh, proposals based on those specifications. Now and then something happens, though, that requires immediate attention, and following these rules could cause additional damage or. Uh, perhaps jeopardize some other, uh, county properties, and this is what occurred. Uh, over the holiday during the storm, we had a very large branch that fell on a. Ten-foot-tall chain link fence at the nature park. And needed to be repaired as quickly as we could do it in order to keep our deer, um, in the park. And so what happened was, I was notified of, uh, what happened, we have an estimate, uh, for the expense, and I went ahead under the. Uh, emergency authorization and approved that expense, I'm hoping the fence is already repaired now and the deer are all happy. Uh, but when these things happen, I'm required by policy to bring this to you at a meeting so that you're made aware. This is only the second time this has happened in three years, so it doesn't happen very often, fortunately. Uh, but nevertheless, these things do occur, and in this case, and I think most of you probably saw an email from me. Uh, about the time this was all happening, so that you were kind of, uh, in the loop anyway of what was going on. Uh, but this, um. Conversation satisfies the policy requirement that you're formally, uh, informed of what happened.
Commissioner Scott, you're on that committee, would you like to add anything to that?
Yeah, well, our caretaker, a lot, one in the committee, November Snow, they contacted me. I immediately contacted Tim. Uh, to see where where we're going with this, I think this is below the threshold of insurance, isn't it?
Right, yeah, there's no deductible rule.
So, um. Yeah, but we, your could have escaped, uh, we did some mediation to that right away, but. Uh, we needed to get it fixed quickly. It's too bad, it's brand-new fence that got up, but. That's the way it is, we get trees to come down, so. But, yeah, I think we took the steps, went through Tim, got it, got it taken care of.
Do you need a resolution for this?
No.
Okay, any questions, commissioners? Okay, onto the next, we have item D, calendar year, twenty twenty-three activities.
Yeah, I put together, uh. Very brief list of things that I know are gonna face, you'll be, you'll be facing as a commission this year, and some timetables have been applied to this. And, uh, just to sort of give you the heads up now what's coming. Uh, I do believe very shortly, we're gonna receive, um, some guidance from Michigan Association of Counties on the use of the opioid settlement funds. Now, what this is, over the last several years, a number of counties across the country. Have cool resources and have sought from, uh, some of these pharmaceutical companies, some compensation for the opioid. Uh, issues that we've all faced, and these, uh, attorneys have been able to work out settlements individually with a number of these companies. Uh, over time, and now some of that money is beginning to flow into the counties. Ogumaw County, we are right now scheduled to receive about one point nine million, just over one point nine million dollars over the next eighteen years. We equals out to about a hundred seven thousand dollars annually in settlement allocations. Progress on these settlement agreements is still fluid, in fact, there was some, uh, conversation, uh, just, uh, in the last few weeks about one of the pharmaceutical companies. Not wanting to make these payments over eighteen years, but instead wanting to make a lump sum payment or something over the next two or three years. Rather than dragging it out, so these dollar amounts are fluid as well, there there could be a little bit more that comes in, could be a little bit less, depending on how some of these conversations go. But. Like many of these types of settlements, there will be rules that will be applied, so these funds will not be just simply put into the general fund. To pay for whatever the county desires, but will likely have to be targeted to. Dealing with the opioid issue, which certainly makes sense, uh, we've talked in the past, uh, at this table about, uh, funding, um. The acronym escapes me, but sting, sting, yes, with these funds. There's also conversation at the prosecutor's office about a software package that would help them in terms of dealing with the cases. Uh, that, um, they're having to face that have an opioid connection. We've also been approached by a couple of long-term care facilities about perhaps, uh, providing them, uh, some funding to help with the rehabilitation process. All of these things valid, but we just don't have yet any guidance on how those funds will be spent. Expect we're gonna see that here in the next few weeks out of MAC. Uh, I don't know that any funding has been received yet, but we have, uh, uh, set up all the, uh, different, um. Accounting arrangements, so this can be directly deposited, but the county, I do expect that's gonna begin very soon. I had another notice yesterday, and it's all the numbers are the same, but it looks like that'll begin to, uh, enter into our accounting here very soon. So we've got that. Um, also during the same time period, uh, January to February time period, we will have transitioned hopefully. From what's called a contributing to reimbursing unemployment insurance determination now. Not to get too complex, but I believe it was in twenty nineteen, uh, we were involved in a bit of a scrape with, uh, unemployment insurance agency at the state level. Regarding unemployment, uh, tax that was due for what are essentially our volunteers. Uh, we've fought that case as as long as we can. Frankly, it's this decided, we are not winning this, uh, this battle, and, um, Karen, you can help me, I believe we've already paid. But what's owed, so it's not like there's an additional expenses coming, but through this process, we learned that we were one of two counties. That were paying unemployment insurance on a contributing basis rather than in a reimbursing basis, meaning we budgeted every year. To pay money to the unemployment agency to cover any potential unemployment situations that we might have, particularly layoffs. Eighty-one counties are doing what's called the reimbursing unemployment insurance determination, which means if we do lay off anybody. Then we pay unemployment to the unemployment agency. I don't have an explanation why that is, it's just what is, so. We petitioned the unemployment insurance agency before their December first deadline to change to a reimbursing, uh, unemployment insurance. Uh, agency, it looks like right now, it's just a matter of routine, we just need to have the final determination from the state, which will occur probably. This month, if not February, and we'll proceed then on the reimbursing rate, meaning we're gonna save some budget dollars, uh, by doing this. And also will not be subject to this kind of audit ever again in the future and having to pay anything additional into the system. Uh, there is an outside possibility, the state might require some other documentation from us, just in terms of what payments we've made in the past. But we are completely paid up on everything, so this should be a pretty routine, uh, determination on the state's part, and hopefully then that results in some budget savings for the county. And relief from the headache of ever having this happen again. Uh, when the committees are, uh, actually established the next week, I am gonna ask for a meeting with the insurance committee to talk about. A supplemental voluntary benefit proposal that we received in December. Uh, what this, uh, means supplemental voluntary means just that, employees can pay into this. Benefit if they want it, nobody's gonna be required to do so. The package, though, is pretty intriguing, it takes some things that we're already doing, like with Aflac. And adding some other potential benefits that employees can purchase through their cancer insurance as one, some other supplemental health-type insurances. Uh, that would be involved, the pricing that has been proposed, uh, is literally half of what our employees are paying into right now for like an Aflac. Policy, uh, so it makes it very intriguing, but also opening the opportunity for some of these other coverages. Uh, the proposal that the committee will see does not require anybody to change anything that they're doing right now, so if an employee wants to continue paying twice as much, they're certainly welcome to do that. But this would require a board approval to enter into this type of an engagement, I would like to put that in front of the insurance committee before it comes to committee the whole. Just to bring a couple of commissioners up to speed on exactly what this, uh, concept would do. Uh, January, February, and March, we are currently working with attorneys, uh, through our insurance carrier. On some settlement conferences and hearing dates for various court cases the county is involved with. At the January twenty-sixth meeting, I've arranged to have attorney Tim Ferrand, uh, to come to the meeting by Zoom. Uh, to review with you in closed session the status of these cases, and for three commissioners. Let you know what these cases are, so we'll have some very detailed conversation about what the case entails and what the county's strategy is, uh. Going through the the court process. February, there is one settlement conference that I'll have the attorney talk to you about very specifically. It's a settlement conference that'll be on Zoom, but unfortunately is, uh, has a bit of a conflict with the time. Uh, with a committee, the whole meeting, so for that meeting, I may need to be excused to participate in the settlement conference. It's a federal court case, I am required to be there representing the county, uh, we do have, um, uh, settlement, uh. Policy that's, uh, available to you if you want to review it, so you'll know what my limitations are going into something like this, also with the, uh. Uh, and advantage of having the insurance carrier there who will likely be the one with the biggest hammer in terms of what we're concerned with. Uh, what they're willing to settle for on a case, uh, and of course, that all had to be brought back to the board for final approval. Uh, also in this first quarter, I absolutely one hundred percent promise to finally get you that employee manual that we've been talking about for three years. Um, that's, uh, uh, an issue that we will likely want to assign to the personnel committee, uh, to also work through and review. Before you're asked to make a decision on, uh, its adoption. In March, we will receive our fiscal year twenty twenty-two audit. Uh, that will, uh, likely happen at a committee, the whole meeting, the auditor will be brought in to go over what the audits are, are showing. What they're telling us, uh, and also showing where we're in compliance, and perhaps hopefully not many places not in compliance with some of the requirements that we're. Um, bound by. In March and April, we will be releasing our medical examiner request for proposals, the current agreement is up, I believe, in the first part of May. Uh, this is one of those formal requests that we'll put out, not only to our current provider, but to, I know at least one other that does. Uh, this is one of those formal requests that we'll put out, not only to our current provider, but to, I know at least one other that does uh, medical examiner services in this area. There may be others, but we will try to track down all of the people qualified to do medical examiner services. Uh, put an RFP in their hands and get some proposals back for probably a three-year agreement, maybe five. We'll, we'll talk about that when the time comes. Uh, that one normally is somewhat routine, but uh, our experience with the medical examiner team in this uh, current uh, contract that did raise some concern about a year and a half ago, so it might take on a little bit more conversation than what we would normally see for an RFP like that. I put down here, April twenty-fourth to twenty-sixth, that's the MAC legislative conference. Of course, commissioners are, are welcome to attend that conference, in fact encouraged. That particular conference, the MAC staff puts together a program uh, usually including legislators and legislative staff and uh, oftentimes uh, with a keynote from the governor talking about their legislative agendas for the, at least the next few months. And it's a good session for commissioners to attend if you're interested, uh, just to get a heads up on what's coming down later in the year um, for counties. And it's very specific to counties, so very timely for us. Uh, in April and May, my contract will expire in May, uh, so we'll likely um, no doubt we'll, we'll be talking about that and uh, it's kind of like a negotiation, probably again going to the personnel committee, maybe the bargaining committee, depending on wherever you want to uh, place that. Uh, June to September, we'll be working diligently on the fiscal year twenty-four budget. We had uh, experiences last year of keeping everything on schedule and actually adopted it when we said we would. Uh, hopefully we'll have a similar experience this year. That's uh, it looks like it's a drawn out process, but it actually goes pretty quickly uh, when you're in the midst of it. So as that happens, um, a lot of education will occur as to what departments are asking for uh, in the coming year, why they're asking for it. And then, of course, the board makes the final determinations. Uh, another conference from MAC on October first through fourth in Kalamazoo, where they do their annual conference. Uh, this is more of an academic exercise where they bring in speakers who will talk about concepts like uh, community engagement and maybe some planning and zoning issues and so on. Difference from the legislative conference in that they're not focused just on legislation, but more the overall responsibilities of a board of commissioners. Couple of general items, uh, we have a number of ordinances that were passed in the seventies and maybe some of them in the early eighties that have absolutely no legislative basis for us to have on the books. They are unenforceable, so we'll be putting together uh, an inventory of those and likely with one resolution, you'll be asked to repeal a number of ordinances that you cannot force. And then finally, we have uh, uh, ongoing ARPA distribution uh, that we're gonna see over the next year. I did include uh, the current uh, spreadsheet of expenditures that have been committed and commitments that we've made for ARPA funds as we stand right now. We've committed just over fifty-seven percent of those funds. We have about one point seven million that the board has not yet considered uh, for distribution. This will be uh, an ongoing process. We'll talk about how, how the board is comfortable doing this. A year ago, we had a uh, special meeting that was just focused on projects for ARPA. The projects were ranked and that's what got us where we are. We fulfilled some of those uh, goals. Uh, maybe worthwhile doing that again with three new commissioners uh, prioritizing uh, what uh, uh, where you would like to see those funds committed to. Now, we have an advantage here as well because the total ARPA commitment from the federal government to Ogumaw County fell below ten million dollars. The federal government said at our level, this is a rounding error. We don't want to have to deal with all of the paperwork for every project that you're doing for something that's less than ten million dollars. You can, as a county, and we did uh, simply state that this is going to be uh, used as lost revenue. And it goes into the general fund and it just simply has to follow all the policies and procedures of the board. No additional reporting requirements or approvals from the federal government. It's the county's to spend. That's the direction that we've taken. So the deadlines that we talked about when this was first uh, awarded to the county of having to have everything uh, allocated by twenty twenty-four and spent by twenty twenty-six, that doesn't apply. Because your rules don't require that, that does not apply. So there's no urgency to get that money spent. Although uh, you will see a correspondence at the next meeting uh, from a local library that is saying, yeah, we would like for you to spend it on us. And there are a number of others who would like us uh, to spend the money on them. So anyway, that's gonna be an ongoing issue throughout the balance of this year. Um, and possibly beyond. So just some things to look forward to in the coming year. Uh, it, it's gonna be busy, but it's certainly doable. Uh, and of course, you have all the other routine things that uh, we'll be dealing with.
This was primarily just enough for us, correct?
It is, yeah.
Okay. Item four E, county email.
So at the new commissioner training, our attorney uh, talked a little bit about county emails and the use of county email. Uh, the suggestion from the county attorney was that all official correspondence that goes on between commissioners and staff or between commissioners themselves or with constituents, that your county emails be used for that purpose exclusively. What that does is guarantees us if we ever get a FOIA request for everybody's emails for the last two years, that we're gonna get them. We, we know where they are. As opposed to when you use your own personal email, that does not shield that data from FOIA. We still have to find it. And if it is on your personal email, then you're gonna have to go through and tell me what's there and submit it to me. And if your personal email is anything like mine, that will be a task. Uh, and, and probably we're gonna miss something. And if you miss something under FOIA, there are nice fines that come along with that, along with the public embarrassment of having to pay fines. We like to avoid that. Don't get a lot of requests for your emails, but I can envision scenarios where that could happen. We did get a request uh, in November for all of the birth emails from twenty twenty to the current date. Uh, that would be a Herculean task. And so we were able to calculate roughly how much time would go into that. What the cost would be to do that. Uh, and then ask for that requester to provide fifty percent of that cost before we filled the request. And that would have been about three thousand dollars. We've not received a check, so we are not filling that request. But those, those things do happen. So I wanted you to have a conversation about how you wanted to approach it as a board. Uh, do you want to use exclusively your county emails or do you want to continue using your personal emails? No, uh, neither approach is wrong. But one approach does help to provide us a little less risk when it comes to having to fill uh, a request like that, should it ever come.
Tom, are you able to put our county emails on our phone?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, cuz that's my biggest concern. That's why I use my personal emails cuz I get notifications on my phone. I don't check this, you know, on a daily or routine basis. Comments, thoughts, Commissioner Mahew? Emails, how would you like to be informed?
They said they'd have been informing me on this, but I don't have to text them back.
Okay, so you'd like an email to be, as far as conversing, how do you want the administrator to converse with you?
Telephone or I'll drive to his house.
And so we have an email on our iPad. You have an email that's assigned to your district. Yes.
I can read. I'm just not gonna write it.
Right, so that's a question. You want to communicate through this email? Okay, Commissioner Simmons?
I don't wanna go through my personal email. I do it on here.
Okay. Commissioner Wiltsey?
I think it's best to keep it county email, all words of county.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, I'll work with Tom and get it on my phone. I, I, it, it worked out so much better just getting it on my own email. But if we gotta go stick it with the county, that's fine, but I, I need to have that channel on the phone.
Right.
Just not home, you know, I, I don't carry this around with me or every place I go.
And I don't check my email routinely. I don't, I checked this once a week.
Oh, the last email I got here was probably a, a year ago.
I just looked. It was October for me, from Tom.
You two need to switch. I changed sister numbers.
Oh, yeah.
The IMads are assigned to district numbers. Um, and the email addresses are just ju- generic. They were developed as OC, OC and district number. So like Brandon, Jenny wants five, now she's one. Um, we can do something different, but I don't really wanna tie it to what person. Because you could change, you know.
Okay.
Take a look, see what I got saved. I might not want her to see what I got saved.
All right, so we'll, we'll get in touch with Tom, but I think moving forward, we'll use our county emails. Yes.
No, um. They can give it, they can get us phones and we just use it for county business and not use our own. In other words, the only thing that'd be on this phone would be county business. And that would have an email address on it, where you can answer it right there, rather than putting on your own personal account. District one.
Well, yeah, but you can't FOIA a phone. I mean, I guess I'm not sure where you're headed there. There, you're looking, you're looking for, you're looking for data. We'll need to try to get away from texts and utilize primarily email.
Right, I agree. But so do you answer text on your phone or you, that's commissioner business or you just your own personal business? Cuz if it, if it's commissioner business, that's FOIable.
Correct, but there shouldn't be a lot there that you would have to.
I don't want them looking at my phone.
Let's, I, I think we should start with this and then, and then again, getting with Tom cuz I check my email very frequently uh, on my phone. I get notifications. So are we okay with that?
And to point out too, to the commissioners, um, when I send you an email, you all receive it. It doesn't necessarily look like that when you get it.
Right.
Because you're blind copied on it and this helps prevent any open meeting violation with conversation going back and forth with commissioners. At least it's my attempt to help shield you from that happening by accident. Uh, so anyway, that's, you're all seeing it. It's just, it's only your name that you're seeing like as.
Do this whole time.
So we wouldn't wanna break that.
Yeah, he, how that used to happen. You hit reply and it goes to everybody. Tim makes it so that doesn't happen.
Yeah, that's good.
So, okay, thank you, Tom. Consent agenda process.
Okay, last item, this is, um, actually came out of a conversation that I had with the county attorney after the last board meeting. Uh, the chair was absent, the vice chair was running the meeting and we kind of stumbled over the consent agenda process at that meeting and I promised that I would just briefly review that with you. Uh, the consent agenda on the regular meeting is usually item number six and it says consent agenda. The idea is if you have several routine items under action items that you would like to take care of with a single motion, this is an opportunity to do that. And the way the process could work very smoothly uh, is that when we get to item number six, if there are items that the board would like to consent is that someone would make a motion to consent all the items under the action items and maybe get a second. Board rules say any commissioner can pull anything off from that consent agenda if you want to. Doesn't require anybody else's seconding or approving or anything. You can just pull it on. So if we have action items seven A through seven H are approved for under consent, uh, the motion would be to add those items to the consent agenda and approve the consent agenda. It gets seconded. Commissioner Wills, he says, I would like to see item seven C pulled. He simply states that and it's pulled from the consent agenda item. Uh, Commissioner Scott says, I want to see item seven H pulled. It gets pulled. And those are then dealt with separately. The idea is for those routine items, not to bog down the momentum of the commission, that you take care of them then in one motion and then come back and take care of the other individual issues that have been pulled from that uh, item. Our meetings aren't generally that complex to where you have a ton of those, but we've had a few. So it's really kind of nice to be able to put aside the routine things and then focus on the ones that really need the additional conversation and maybe some amending or whatever might happen. Uh, as we progress through the year, uh, with the next meeting, we'll, we can review this again just to make sure that we understand that. There was confusion at the last meeting about, okay, we've got a consent agenda. Now we need another motion to approve it. And there was conversation about, well, I don't wanna consent all that. And it just, um, it, we stumbled through it. We got through it, but we stumbled through it. We can make it run more smoothly. Uh, and see Donna's still on the line here, so you can say I meant my obligation. I brought it up and we will work to make that run more.
We're gonna continue with one, just one request can pull.
Right, yeah, that's the only thing different than what we've been doing. I don't know if we've been, what we were doing prior to that. I, I know we were discussing it, but I don't, we weren't passing a motion to pull something or seconding that, were we?
Well, I think we're beginning into that.
We were waiting for, we were waiting for a majority of commissioners to pull one thing off. Not one commissioner could pull one thing off.
Yeah, we were. Yeah, we were. But my other question, and Commissioner Scott had brought this up, uh, I, I is pulling, and I agree with you now, pulling claims out of there. You wanted to put that some other place, which I think is a good idea now that we're doing.
Early on, yeah, I, I said that. I, I thought claims should go at another spot in the.
I agree with you. I, I don't.
We always pull them or never consent the claims.
Correct, as we should.
Yeah.
So where would you like that?
Um, so your new business items are usually seven. We can make a new eight. Item number eight will be claims, right?
Hey, uh, hi.
Hi.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hi, this is Don. I know I haven't uh, had an opportunity to uh, meet many of the members here. I think you've met Matt. Um, I'm the one who raised this issue and, and went back and forth with him a little bit after the, the last, um, the last meeting. And there is a, you know, as Tim just mentioned, a, a procedure that's set forth in your um, in your rules, which you approved today, so that aren't, they'll be unchanged from what you've had in the past. And it's a section five point six consent calendar. And uh, but also I focus on section five point five, your order of business, because that's what establishes what's, what, what your uh, agenda looks like every, every time you meet. And item number s- uh, seven is, is titled action on consent calendar and item number eight is entitled new business. I find this somewhat confusing, but the way you, as, as I've seen it, as I feel like I've seen it, is you've put everything and listed it under new business, but treated it uh, genera- the new business section of your, of your agenda as if it's the consent calendar. So you basically, you, you've had everything listed under new business and then you've um, removed claims and maybe some other things from that. And then you voted on um, on new business as if it's the consent calendar. When, what I'm suggesting is that you follow the rule a little bit more closely. And what it says is those matters that the board of commissioners has determined to be routine and usually matters about which the board commonly confers would appear on the consent calendar. And I'm pointing this out because you just raised the issue of adding a new item, which would require an amendment to your rules that you just adopted. But I don't think you have to do that. What you do have to do is express to Tim that it's the sense of the board, then um, the claim should always appear under new business. But some of these other routine matters, uh, should appear under the consent calendar section. So I really don't think it's necessary that, that you create a new line in your agenda or a new section in your agenda. If you just leave claims under new business and every week, you'll, every week, every two weeks, you know, um, that um, that, that, that's an item that will appear under new business, not as part of the consent calendar, and you don't even have to remove it. But built into that equation is all those items that you view as routine should be listed under, I think, listed under consent calendar. And um, and that, that, you know, and then they can be removed. So if you have an item and you say, hey, I, I really wanted to discuss this separately, it can be removed from the consent calendar and then basically it just moves down to new business.
You got that?
Yep, I got it.
Okay.
Does all that make sense? I think it's, again, we're, we're really dancing on the head of a pen. I, I think the board's been handling things uh, pretty well. It was just that hiccup at the last meeting where, and we pulled the rules out and, and I couldn't sort it out while the conversation was, was ongoing. And I just think it can be handled a little, a little bit more cleanly. By the way, you have great rules. Uh, there's some of the clearest, most well-written rules I've ever read, so um, and, and I think that this section stands out. It's, it's very, it's very clear and, and something you can really rely on.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott?
Can I ask you a question then? When we're looking at order of business five point five in that. Um, down at the bottom, public com- uh, closed session, if needed, then public comment, then adjournment. In, in past practice, we, we've done public comment before closed session and didn't, and didn't offer it afterwards. Uh, is there a problem with that or should we make that change here? Public comment in fifteen and then closed session if needed at sixteen.
And I assume you do that uh, because you're having a closed session and you don't want people to have to wait for after that.
Right. Normally, there's maybe one or two persons that'll hang around.
Yeah.
To hear adjournment. Uh, but we usually, the chair has always said there will be no action after the public comment or after the closed session. But that really isn't fair to say that either because if, if we do something in closed session that demands a vote that day, we would have to reopen the meeting and then make that rather than if it was, we wouldn't wanna wait, maybe it's a subject we don't wanna wait for two weeks to make a decision on.
Right, but I don't think going in a closed session that we've had, uh, Right, but I don't think going in a closed session that we've had uh. That possibility. Your closed session hasn't been to where.
We did one time. We came out and voted on something.
Yeah.
Prior to that, then did we state that there we know?
Yes, you stated there may be action after this.
Yeah.
Yeah, in that case.
So we covered that.
I think we may have to just say that every time is there may be action. So that we don't lead the public to the wrong conclusion that there's never a vote afterwards.
But we typically know going into closed session what our ta- what our subject matter is, if there is a possibility or if there isn't.
Well, then we just pay attention better.
Right, that's fair.
Say that, but.
Are you all set?
I am.
Okay. Public comment on any subject matter. Come on up, Sheriff.
Morning, Ryan Gilbert, Sheriff. I just would like to welcome and congratulate our new commissioners. Uh and this, our doors are open. All yous, if there's any questions, concerns in our operation, we're there. Either myself or the undersheriff can can get you through that question. Yeah, but I just wanna say congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Did the new commissioners wanna say anything?
I just, I'm really excited to start this. Um. I've got a deep passion for Ogumaw County and um looking forward to working with everyone here.
Other commissioners, any any comments?
Uh seems nice to sit here again.
Thank you.
I moved up one chair.
Any public comment on the phone?
Yeah, they're good chairs now.
Any public comment? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
With support? I'll support it. We have a motion with support to adjourn at eleven twelve. All in favor? I opposed. Motion carries.